Okay, thank you, thank you everyone in the public meeting between the planning zoning commission and town council coordinator, if we could please rise for the public.
The United States of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Vol call?
I'll start with the town council members, Mayor Gazinski.
Here.
Donna Rizzolo.
Here.
Charles Penessa.
Here.
Donna Beach.
Here.
Sandra Capola.
Here.
Casey Foster.
Here.
Peter Rosso.
He's a.
Okay, mark him excused. Jean Daly asked to be excused. Andrew Lillard also asked to be excused. Diane Gersey.
Here.
Timothy Zigma.
Here.
Brian Rogan.
Here.
Joan Beale.
Here.
Scott Hamel. He may not even be sworn in yet, I'm not sure, he just got reappointed. Nikki Zimbicki. Steve Biella Jr. You have both arms on both.
Thank you very much. So folks, before we get started, appreciate everybody being here, members of the planning zoning and the council and our guests. So we just, we're kind of using this special meeting as a information gathering for the council, for the planning zoning commissioners. Also to get some information out to our townspeople as well. So I think after tonight, I think what our plan is here in Berlin is to probably have a public forum. And I think we're talking about early April perhaps, and we have more to come, and that's I think till May 21st, 2023, so like the, you know, as much as we are decision makers, the council, planning zoning, we want to hear from the from the folks at Berlin, from our residents and our voters, what they want to know about adult use cannabis and the regulations, the state regulations and what they want in Berlin, we want to hear from the folks in Berlin, what they want. So I think we'll work on that, we'll have kind of got through our budget process by then, and so early April, we'll shoot for a meeting maybe at the high school or at McGee and get it publicized and we can obviously put out some information to the folks and then let them speak and public council and planning zoning, what they're interested in in Berlin, so we know how to proceed, so that's the game plan after this evening, so with that, appreciate us here and we look forward to speakers and folks, you know, from the audience, whoever wants to speak up tonight, tonight for that as well. Take it away.
Thanks very much, Mayor. For those in the room that don't know me, my name is Jennifer Capola and I work at Corporation Council's office, Yule and Denofrio in North Even. And I am principally involved as land use council in representation of the town. So I have been on the journey with planning and zoning for consideration of Iraqa. And tonight, really, the primary purpose is to get you some information, you know, information in the hands of the decision makers to really learn about what the cannabis establishment businesses, what their day-to-day operations are like, considerations that, you know, you're concerned about to put you together with some potential business owners of cannabis establishment in your town, folks that are interested in doing business with Berlin. So I have three speakers that I've communicated with. The first one is online. Her name is Amanda Ostruins and she's with Slap Ash LLC. And they've actually been approved for two retailer licenses and one delivery service license. So Amanda, welcome, and I'll turn things over to you, she does have a presentation that she's going to share. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you for having me today. I look forward to speaking with you guys and I was very excited to see that this forum was created as I've been keeping a very close eye on Berlin as we work through our site selection. So today, I just want to tell you a little bit about us, kind of walk you through our other sites since we have two retailers and use that as an opportunity to give you a little bit more background on how these operate and give you a little bit more on what's going on in the state, as well as some considerations for Berlin. So I'm sure I'll ask a lot, leave you with some questions, happy to answer them all. And I apologize if this is at all, if you find any typos or it's a little disjointed as we were given this opportunity this morning and just wanted to make sure we got a deck through before the presentation, so with that, I'm going to jump in. So just a little overview on our entity and to confirm, you guys can see the slides?
Yes.
Fantastic. So my partner in this is named Ashley Vaughn and the two of us go all the way back to high school. She went to Weaver High School in Hartford and I went to Watkinson and we met playing a basketball. And I've been in the cannabis space since 2014 and when the opportunity finally came up in Connecticut to apply, you better believe I did, and we were fortunate enough to win two retail licenses as well as a delivery license. They are both active and provisional, and if you notice here, the expiration dates are kind of important. Because these are provisional, they have to be finalized. In order to finalize, you have to get your site control, you have to get local zoning approval and then the rest is paperwork from there, but those are the two hardest things. And then you also have to be entirely built out before the expiration of this period. So the state will come and inspect you and you're 25% built out, 50%, 75% and 100%. So to say the least, time is of the essence. Just to give you a little bit of background, cannabis in Connecticut, the original medical licenses were, the first set were issued in 2012 and more have been issued since, but in total, the state has licensed 18 medical cannabis dispensaries and in 2021, they passed a new legislation to allow adult use. In this process, they created a lottery which allowed for 12 new adult use retailers, four hybrid retailers, meaning they'll have medical and adult use. And then they also awarded a bunch of large-scale cultivation licenses that they called 149s. These are the ones you might have heard about that were the $3 million licenses. After the filing period for those licenses which were not subject to the lottery closed, there was a legislative change that allowed each of those to have two dispensaries, once their cultivations are up and running. On top of that, the existing 18 medical dispensaries are also each allowed to have two more, what they call social equity joint ventures. And of the 18, nine were approved for sales to begin on January 10th. Of those seven, were able to open up their doors. The rest of the other 12 are expected to open any day now. So the reason I run through those numbers is to kind of show you that I think there's going to be about 75 total licenses in the state. In reality, those numbers I gave you allow for more, but for one reason or another, people might use their social equity joint ventures for other license types, or it just might not make sense for them to open them. So just a little bit more on who we are as a team. We're a Connecticut-based company. Ashley actually works in government by background. She works running all the real estate services for Hillsborough County and their facilities. I come from a deep background in cannabis. I actually, I'm a lawyer by trade and I started in the space as an attorney with a research problem and it was local government policy. Unlike tracking state and federal law, there was 40,000 local governments and no one place where all the information existed and I decided to be masochistic enough to endeavor in that, so I built a company called Canorix. I bootstrapped it to about 17 employees, raised a little capital, grew it quite big, quite fast and it was acquired in 2020. And by virtue of having built a software that tracked the local government, I became a real expert in policy and local land use and started a consulting firm that helps operators all over the country figure out what state they're going to operate out of, what city, out of what properties. So in the last 18 months alone, I've cited over 35 properties for national cannabis operators. And we also help companies get licenses. In this case, it was finally our turn to go after the license and be able to partner with some of our existing partners for operational support as most of our partners are privately held multi-state operators. I emphasize privately held because it means they're not living off of public market money, they're not living off of, you know, constantly issuing more stock certificates, they're operating off of business fundamentals. And what goes into what makes a great site is really important. You know, it's not just about, okay, they're going to allow me here, it's about the right building, it's about the right population, it's about the right demographics, it's about the right vehicle counts, it's about the right densities. It's about the right government who wants to work with us, so there's so much that goes into it. And we're really focused on business fundamentals as opposed to just top-line revenue. And so just to give you a sense, the first property that we've acquired, because we have two licenses, is in Canton, Connecticut. Actually closed on this property on December 22nd. And, you know, just to kind of understand what goes into what we look at when we are analyzing where we're going to go, this is how we decided we were going to go to Canton. We could see that these towns around us were prohibited, that we had Route 44 running through. We had a lot of population here to serve and Canton really wanted the revenue opportunity. So we have about 90,000 residents that were able to serve with this one store as their closest dispensary. And we always are keeping track of what's going on around, so of course, we've done the same analysis for Berlin. But what we bought there was a former Bank of America, it's about 3,000 square feet on a very busy road, not surprising why I like the Berlin Turnpike, much the way that I like Route 44. You know, solid demographics. And I wanted to just show you the exterior of this building because what I'm going to show you next is actually, well, we've moved through it quite quickly, actually. We submitted our land use application at the end of December. We had our first meeting on 118 for special permit and we expect to be passed and adopted at the next planning commission. We've been working alongside with Fussell O'Neill and MRG as well as some of the top other engineering firms in the state. But why I actually wanted to show you that was just to give you a sense of how these operate. And this one's probably going to be hard for you to see, but it's an example of a floor plan. And for those of you who can see, every single bit that goes into these operations is extremely meticulous and detailed and built around compliance-centric and security-focused operation.
Amanda, Amanda, we're having a little bit of feedback problem, could you just hold on for one second?
New problem, everyone. That we haven't experienced before. It seemed to stop.
Everybody else is unmute.
Mm-hmm. I double-checked. I even, now I'm unmuted.
All right.
I'm sure she'll be able to talk. She can try again.
Yeah. Try again.
Is this okay now or do you still feedback?
Yeah. We're good right now.
Okay. Now, I'm not sure how big your TV is, but I just wanted to give you this to show the intricacy of what goes into an operation and see if I can't take you on a walk through if it is big enough. But this is for my Canton store, this is not what your store's going to look like because every single building I operate out of is going to be different. And this is built explicitly around the building I bought in Canton, but I just thought from a perspective of how these function and how these operate, it might be valuable to walk through. So what you can see from the far left side of the screen is our public entrance. It's got an entrance vestibule and a half window into the security room. Security room also goes through an exit vestibule, these are both man trap. There's a reception desk and you come in and you go into a waiting area. When it's determined there's enough room on the sales floor, you're allowed out of the waiting area into the sales floor. And then there's a bunch of different point-of-sale stations around and a sales counter. The entire second half of this building is all the back of house. Everything that comes into our building comes in through a separate vendor entrance. We've got staff lockers and bathroom, we've got a vault. One thing that's nice about this one is the state requires a controlled substance level one vault, but when you buy a bank, it has one, so that's helpful. And then we have inventory control rooms, manager's office with IT servers and everything is very controlled on how and who can access each and every one of these doors. Everything is up to code ADA, you name it, if ramping is needed, we add it. So I just wanted to give you this to show you that every single bit of your transaction is going to be in a very controlled space. There's on average 25 to 40 cameras that oversee every inch of this. The person who's sitting in the security room will be able to see all of those, but also police by law have the right to have remote access into the cameras at any time they so please. So some key considerations for Berlin and, you know, that I wanted to talk about tonight are, you know, revenue potential, job creation, creating a business environment that's actually attractive to operators, right? There's plenty of towns that are allowing cannabis today, but they're not attractive for a multitude of reasons. And, you know, we want to make sure that if you guys are going to consider crafting policy, that the exercise is done in a way that will actually attract operators as opposed to be academic exercise. And so in order to create, you know, an attractive environment, that's going to require, you know, analyzing competition from surrounding communities, preventing over-concentration of retailers, you know, zoning that aligns with retail strategy while still protecting sensitive uses and some swift action in adopting permissive rules because we have impending state deadlines. We'll also touch on some common concerns and how those can be addressed. I also, we have a whole memo we've written up that kind of quells all the security concerns and in fact, most of the quotes in it come from a police chief out of California who oversees 10 of these in his town. And so it's quite fascinating to see this coming actually from the police themselves. And we can also talk about traffic and, you know, concerns about youth exposure, but I just want to go back to one quick thing before I jump in, which is the swift action portion of this.
Amanda, excuse me, Amanda, we're having another issue again, it started again, hold on one second. That one's broken.
So is that it? Is that the culprit? Do you think that's the culprit?
We're going to try again.
Okay, is now good?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to reiterate why swift action is so important. And that's because we've gotten 14 months from the time of licensure to when we need to be open, to when we have to have our final licenses. So let's say you guys wait until April to pass an ordinance and the next step would be land use. It's going to take us at least a month from the time your ordinance is passed to put together if we're lucky. Now, I can put it together in a month because I have Fussell O'Neill and MRG at my fingertips, but they're still not going to like me. But that's to get together site plans and a special permit application if you guys go that route, traffic studies, getting out counts, that all takes time. Then we've got to actually get onto a land use hearing. And if that takes more than one meeting, we're looking at another two to three months there. Next, I have to pull building permits and so that's going to be all demo permits, etc. That's months of work as well, and then I actually have to do this. And because of the crews we have lined up, we believe we can get it done in 12 weeks of construction, but that's still an extremely consolidated timeline. And so this is a really great revenue opportunity for Berlin, but one that could be lost if action isn't swift enough because we simply can't wait. So let's just talk about revenue. We all know that cannabis is in your community, it's everywhere, it has been. And now there's an opportunity to actually regulate it and benefit monetarily. We project from a store in Berlin, based on the traffic counts and the competitive analysis, that out of a store there, we could do somewhere between 750 to $1 million a month in revenue. Granted, our margin isn't anything like that because of all the tax implications, but the good news is you get your tax and at 3% that could be up to around $300,000 a year or over $3 million over the course of a decade. And that is not insignificant money. Job creation, you know, based on our 3,000 square foot footprint and this one we think might actually be a bit larger, we would anticipate hiring at least six full-time employees and eight part-time employees with competitive salaries, benefits packages, professional development. And we also, we have a rigorous training program to make sure we instill a culture of compliance and train people on all the security procedures and cannabis operational procedures because no one in Connecticut has experience, right? You're not just getting, going from working at one retail store to another, this is highly regulated, much more like a pharmacy. So it requires training and it's a unique skill set. So to fully understand the opportunity in Berlin, and I sorry, this blew up a little poorly, kind of have to understand what the surrounding communities are doing, so the ones we circled off and read are prohibitive and the ones in green are permissive, although notably, there are no dispensaries in Plainville. So far, there are none in Farmington so far, there are none in East Hartford so far. Approved and Rocky Hill didn't exactly opt in, their moratorium just lapsed. And so with that, I wanted to take you more, a little bit closer picture. So here's actually a map of what our true competitive landscape looks like. So Southington to the east, sorry, to the west, it's prohibited. New Britain allowed, but they only allowed one and you've got Nova Farms and it's all the way basically by West Farms across the street from Farmington. Plainville, like I said, allowed, but doesn't have any. Newington has Fine and Fettle and Willowbrook that is pending and they're capped at two. Weathersfield is in the process of passing permissive regulations. Cromwell has allowed for two. Middleton has allowed for one, it just doesn't fit into this picture and it's been issued. And then in Meriden, there are three that are currently approved and they're capped at three. So what I do find really compelling here is you see, you know, clusters and there's a huge stretch of Berlin Turnpike that's untouched as well as portions of Farmington Avenue, you know, that are quite attractive. So one of the key things that we're talking about that's really important and why I mentioned these caps is preventing over-concentration. Once you have too many allowed in a given jurisdiction, it's unattractive to us to come and do business there, we don't want to be amongst all of our peers because we're fighting for, you know, all the same revenue pool, but also for a jurisdiction, it's not ideal and that one, you won't attract the best operators, but also you really only have the same sort of general population to serve and do you want to serve five stores serving it or two? It's really not a big difference in what the revenue base is going to be, but it's more to regulate. So we just wanted to show different methodologies that were used to prevent over-concentration and so explicit license caps are one. And so for example, in Norwalk, they're capped at three, in Newington, they're capped at two. In West Hartford, they're kept at one per 25,000 residents, which comes to two. There was a state density limitation that originally capped at one for 25,000 residents, but that was lifted. So these new caps have been placed in and West Hartford, they decided, well, we liked that number, so they imposed it. Others have basically used setbacks to other retailers. So like in Branford, they have 8,000 feet in between, which basically based on where the one is, 8,000 feet near the direction, you'll be zoned out. So it caps it at one kind of, but with a different methodology and some combine it. So for example, for a hybrid in South Windsor, they're going to limit it to two with a 2,000-foot separation between them. So just some considerations in order to be a pretty attractive jurisdiction. You know, in looking at and assessing, we think it's really important that Berlin, if they choose to move forward, zones this in key commercial corridors. Back a few years ago, when there was just a few medical dispensaries, you could have gotten away with placing these out of sight, out of mind in industrial corridors. But that is not the case anymore. People want to stop for this the way they stop for their alcohol, for their groceries in a commercial corridor. They are going to, in fact, probably drive straight past a town where they'd have to turn off of a main drag, go into an industrial corridor and come back on and go to the next town down that's going to have it. So if they can't shop on Berlin Turnpike in Berlin, they'll probably shop on it in Newington on their way towards Hartford. That's kind of what we found throughout the country and we're seeing a huge trend of way from industrial zoning towards commercial corridors and it's also the best way for the town to capture the most revenue. Ideally, we'd love to see it capped at one, but probably no more than two for this to be attractive, given the amount of competition just to the south in Meriden. And the other really important thing is sensitive use receptors. So there's zoning and there's setbacks, right? There's all sorts of different sensitive uses that different jurisdictions have identified as important to them to, you know, protect the youth amongst other things. And these are kind of the most common ones, schools, churches, residential and daycare. And I've kind of just given some examples and mind you, we track every single jurisdiction in Connecticut, so it was very easy to pull kind of what the ranges are, you know, these create some restrictions. There's very restrictive and there's prohibitively restrictive. And kind of gave some examples of each, but like for example, in residential, if they do more than a 200-foot buffer from a residential district, you kind of zone out all the commercial districts for the most part because almost every commercial district is buffered by a residential district. And so you can see though, in places like where they're at least less restrictive, they'd say not in the same building and then some they'd say 100 feet. When you look at these ones that are prohibitively restrictive, Derby and Bethany, East Gramby, some of the things in East Hartford and Enfield that we gave as examples, every single one of these, none of them have an adult use retailer in them. Because they're so restrictive, they haven't attracted anyone, but they took the effort to make these regulations, so it's key to go, what do we need to do to feel like we're protecting our citizens? But what's the least restriction we can create, knowing that we're doing this in a commercial corridor, generally speaking? Just want to show you a couple of places that we were considering. You know, we're all some very, very preliminary talks, we haven't really done as much outreach, but we have spoken to many of these property owners who are open to our use. And you can see where some of those others were 500 feet, 1,000 feet of buffers, we always try to get as far away as we humanly can. And I mean, this is exceptional, being two miles from a school or a daycare, that's going to be rare, but in a BT1 zone. When you look at 14, 1943, what I really like about this is you can stop for your liquor and your cannabis in the same place. I mean, if there's any place where it's appropriate to be selling to 21 and over, you'd imagine be next to a liquor store. It's got ample zoning, again, quite far away from all sorts of sensitive receptors. We've also looked at this building next to, I believe it may be next to the Dunkin' Donuts. And it is again, the closest sensitive use is about 1,000 feet to a house of worship, but still quite a bit away. And then we've also considered the former writing. You know, this one has pros and cons, we like Farmington Avenue, it doesn't have the traffic count that Berlin Turnpike has, but at the same time, it doesn't have as much competition as the Berlin Turnpike has between, you know, Newington and then also not far off from Cromwell. So we do love a standalone building, but we're also good with strips. The reason you'll see that we leaned more towards standalone buildings is strips tend to have federally chartered financing and therefore they cannot take in cannabis tenants because of the federal illegality, but those without debt tend to take us and we've gotten them more and more comfortable with us over time. And, you know, part of why we think we'd be so great for Berlin is that Berlin has more vacancy than most of the other communities that have allowed cannabis. And not only can we decrease vacancy, but also with decreased vacancy comes decreased crime. Crime goes to vacancy, not to well-lit, well-secured, you know, intense, intensely secured facilities and fortresses. So we've looked at quite a few spots and talked to quite a few landlords and very interested in the opportunity. Just again, to reiterate, I know there's often concerns about security. All of our products have to be in bank-grade safes and controlled substance level vaults overnight. We have intense surveillance rooms, there's very specific industry required seed-to-sale software that tracks everything. We don't keep lots of cash in premise, we always are very careful about that, although we have bank-level vaults. 24/7 security, filming, locks, we have duress alarm, panic alarms, we have let's blend in the window for, it's a smashed window, everything you can imagine would be there. We have protocols and SOPs for any report of loss or theft. All of our transport has to be in unmarked inconspicuous vehicles with GPS monitoring. So to say the least, you know, while cannabis has been in a lot of these communities for a very long time, now there's an opportunity to make it safe and also you won't be able to see any cannabis product from the exterior of the buildings. So that also is a benefit to the youth and there are no kids coming into these facilities. There are at least three points of ID check before they come in. Unlike the liquor stores where you can see straight in and people can go in with their children. So if you're worried about youth getting access to cannabis through these dispensaries, I promise you, they are not coming in here. So if you're worried about youth getting access to cannabis through these dispensaries, I promise you, they are not coming in here. So. With that, I open it up to questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and I appreciate that. Council members, any commissioners, questions?
I have a question, actually, it's more of a comment.
Makes you lean into it. Oh, that one is not very sensitive.
More of a concern, because. When I hear that. In the locations that you've chosen on Farmington Avenue. We are having issues with lots of crime in town. Just kids racing up and down the Chamberlain Highway. Trying to break into houses. This is the center of town, you're talking about putting this cannabis shop, but not only that. The locations on the turnpike, I find it highly concerning because. There are a lot of instances of sex trafficking up and down the Chamberlain and the turnpike. I just. These are my concerns. I don't, I don't know how you would be able to even address any of them. There's a lot of. For lack of a better word. Not so nice hotels, motels on the turnpike as well. It just seems to me like a situation that that's kind of ripe for a lot of different potential issues to happen. Especially if you're talking about all the two locations, Farmington Avenue as well as the turnpike.
Well, so we are open to, you know, there's a reason why we picked sites in both. The commercial core as well as the Berlin Turnpike District, because we're open to feedback on that, but. When you talk about crime and kids racing up and down. That's because of vacancy. When you remove vacancy and you put cameras everywhere, people tend to behave more, but moreover. We're happy, well, not only are we happy to, but we provide access to those cameras per law. To the police, so we actually become eyes and ears for the police. So when you look at crime, it's quite a deterrent to crime. Moreover, if there was reported sex trafficking or things like that, they could use the footage from our cameras. As lead information on that, so more than anything, anyone who's trying to lurk in the shadows, we are a deterrent to that.
Okay, thank you for that. Any, anyone else from the council? Yeah, get you on.
I used to stay in here, I'm clearly over there. As many of you probably already know, I was a no vote in Hartford, a legalized cannabis. So I am listening very intently, although I have some big issues with a lot of what you're telling me. I don't know how you can stand up there and say that this is a three hundred thousand dollar profit for the town of Berlin. Our police officers and Chief O'Year, I'm sure can chime in. There's a lot of expense that goes along with. Making sure that these places are safe. And that they are not attracting undesirables. I could go on and on, and probably stand up here for the next hour, but I'm not going to. Have a long day. But I do have some reservations with some of those numbers. Not to mention several.
One thing I will mention is that while we do have security personnel on our site. The state legislation allows for, should we become an excessive traffic issue or require extra police help. They can charge us up to fifty thousand dollars in the first three months, which is quite an incentive for us to manage it ourselves. But also a methodology of recovery for the police department.
Thank you. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor. I guess my question is, I'm just going to kind of dovetail on what Consular Reach was talking about, is that. According to your testimony in your presentation. You were talking about three hundred thousand dollars may be recognized by Berlin on a yearly basis. And that would be a tax revenue producer. But I guess, I don't know, if you can answer a question, perhaps the Deputy Chief, because I saw that he's here. I'm not sure how many more police officers we will have to, we will have to have join our force and bring on. To stay up with traffic or other issues that could arise from heavy cannabis use. And I do know that, I guess there's a certification that the police have to go through in order. In order to be able to differentiate between a drunk driver versus a stoned driver, so to speak. So, and I know that that is cumbersome on the town. And so I guess three hundred thousand dollars to me. As a tax revenue, it doesn't seem like a huge incentive. To, to, to have a retail store in town.
I hear you and I understand, I will say. Three hundred thousand adds up, and it's three hundred thousand dollars that isn't coming to town today, but cannabis is already in your town. Bringing cannabis to a dispensary where you're providing public safe access and controlled environment. Is actually going to not change whether or not people are consuming in Berlin. People have been consuming in Berlin and driving intoxicated in Berlin for as long as time can be. The difference is whether or not to regulate it and tax it and provide safe access to tested, safe product. But it's already in Berlin, and there's no question about that.
It could be, but I guess my point is, I guess when we have to. Consider this and consider at what level we want to be engaged, if any, as a town. And that'll be up for the town to decide. I guess it's how much do we want to make a bad situation worse? So, I mean. I just, that's of course my opinion. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Coppola. And just a couple, I guess, one more of a statement, the other more of a question. From what I've been understanding out in Colorado, they have noticed an uptick as far as crimes at the dispensaries. Because what they're realizing is, and again, this is just from what I've heard or what I've read, is that. Artels per se realize that when they're crossing from Mexico to the United States, that it becomes a federal offense, however. When they're doing it within Colorado, stealing there, it's not federal, so. From what I understand from some people I know in Colorado, they are noticing an uptick on crimes at dispensaries. The other portion is just more of a comment. You know, I know you say that cannabis is in Berlin and, you know, illegally, and I understand that. No, yes, tax revenue is, you know, towns always want to get revenue. But I look at it at what cost, you know, we used to have from, or I lived in town. There were three strip bars in town, and nobody liked those because of the type of clientele or people that came in, so. The urge was to get rid of the strip bars. There was a VIP shop who wanted to be on the Berlin Turnpike, people didn't like that again, as of the type of clientele that it was going to bring. You know, same kind of thing, you could do that with, with multiple. Businesses that are legal within the state, but is that what we want to have in the town and present? So that's just one of the things that I think we need to consider as well.
Yeah, and what's right for Berlin is for Berlin to decide, and I can't decide that. What I can say. To differentiate from strip clubs and any other uses, there is no other use. Zero other uses. It will bring a direct three percent tax benefit to the local community directly.
Yeah, if you want more.
I have another concern, so you, you're talking about saturation. But you're talking about towns that, like Plainville, Newington, Weathersfield, Cromwell, West Hartford. With all of these shops, you're talking about two, sometimes three, Meriden has three. How can you say that it's not going to be saturated? It seems to me that those states that have legalized cannabis in them, you'll find a great distance between one shop to another. So it's not a guarantee in my mind that somebody's going to want to stop in Berlin. To pick up your cannabis when they can easily hit Plainville, West Hartford, Weathersfield. It just seems like, we're talking in circles here because. There, it looks like there is going to be a saturation. It doesn't make sense in my mind why. Because we have legalized cannabis now that every single town in the state of Connecticut. And Connecticut is a small state, when you compare it with other states in the nation, why we need to be having these. Cannabis shops within every single town in the state.
Again, you don't need to have them in a state, but what we're talking about is preventing overconcentration in a given jurisdiction. And, you know, our math shows that as long as it stays to less than one dispensary per fifteen thousand people. That these stores can self-sustain, but where there are more, you end up with more storefronts that go out of business because. It is not a sustainable business, so we wouldn't want to come to a town where we don't believe that we could make a business, and that's why we request. And help prevent for an overconcentration of these, as opposed to where you see, you know, thirty tobacco stores. And a couple go out of business because there are too many of them, and there is no mechanism with which to limit the number.
All right, so thank you very much, appreciate the presentation, thank you for coming tonight, thank, thank you for all of the comments, so. Go ahead and move on to another presenter.
We also have Jamie Campbell on line. There's none up, Jamie. And Jamie is from Bud's Goods and Provisions in Massachusetts.
Yes, good evening. So I don't have a presentation, you know, put together for you. We are a, we are a Massachusetts operator that's retail there. We also have a processing license that we use for packaging in another facility that we've just built. We won a product packager license in the Connecticut General Lottery. So we're looking around Connecticut for a place to build a twenty to thirty thousand foot. Packaging facility, just like the one that we're, you know, we're about to put into operation in Lakeville, Massachusetts. We can kind of be anywhere in an industrial zone, you know, this isn't like retail where we really need location, 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 so. We're fine being tucked away in the back of an industrial park, you know, just somewhere close to highway access and. You can reach anywhere in Connecticut, you know, in one day's drive, so it's not really necessary to be central, though that is helpful. And that's why we're looking in certain areas like Berlin.
I appreciate that.
And next, in person, we have Dominic DiMartino and his team.
Welcome back. Good evening, Mayor, council members, CBA members. My name is Dominic DiMartino. I own a piece of property on the Berlin Turnpike. Berlin Turnpike, it was a former pastor building, kind of on the Berlin, near the mine. So inside that facility, we have approximately forty-two thousand square feet plus or minus. We also have the ability. To add on, I think around seventy-eight thousand square feet, we were granted, if it was a couple of years, a few years back. I'm the owner of Twisty Growers, also in Lakeville, Massachusetts. It's a twenty-seven thousand square foot, a whole cultivation facility with a full license for cultivation, actually, processing. We hope to have that up and operational in the next few months. My desire was to stay here in Connecticut. But the opportunity wasn't available to me, so I had owned property in Massachusetts and seeked license there, successful getting it. I did try to enter the lottery, but it was not successful. But that being said. The building on the Berlin Turnpike is a facility that I own, all right? There's no mortgage on the facility, so it moved to allow me to either do business with, some of you may come into town if you should choose to. Allow that zoning to accept it, or there's an application later on that opens up to other individuals. I'm interested in being an MSO multi-state operator as well. So basically, tonight I asked my attorney, Phil Silverman, come down from Massachusetts, I found him to be an expert in the. The laws of marijuana, and I turned it over to him so he could speak a little bit about it, and if there's any questions, he's certainly going to answer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, my name is Phil Silverman, I'm a law firm with Sandy Sederberg, represent Dominic and his company. In addition, I also represent several cannabis companies who would be interested in locating their cannabis businesses here. Including Jamie's company, as it turns out, who I didn't know was going to be here tonight, but we represent them in Massachusetts. By way of background, I worked for a national cannabis law firm, it's the only type of work we do. We have offices in every state which has legalized cannabis, and what we do is we specialize in compliance. And what that is, is making sure that our clients are operating within the laws of the state and the local community. And so we sit down with the planning boards and the mayors and the police chiefs and the fire chiefs. And we try to figure out what those local concerns are, so that we can implement. A local vision of what a cannabis business should look like. Every one of these businesses is different, every community is different. But what we have found is that they can work, they can be done safely and securely, so. As I said, I work up in the Boston, this started this about seven years ago, we represent, I think it's a hundred and fifty cannabis businesses in Massachusetts. And without exception, they're really all operating very safely and securely. And so, given the experience that I've had over the last seven years. My client thought that it might be helpful, I mean, to sort of come in and try to give you a sense of what these businesses are like. A lot of myths, a lot of rumors about what happens with these things, and I think the good news is. There's, there are states that have done this and done it successfully without harm to the public, and sort of that's what I want to try to get across to you a little bit. And so. To start, I think we need to separate the different types of activities that might go on for a cannabis company, so. There's really three types of things, one is cultivation, rolling the blade. Okay, the second one is what we call product manufacturer. Where you take that plant and you extract the oils from it, and then you put it into, in some cases, vaporizer pens or edibles, topical ointments. There's a whole number of different products, but that's the product manufacturer inside this. And then the third piece is retail. So I'm going to start with the easy ones, the less impactful ones on your community, which is cultivation and product manufacturing, because. In the end, what you might do is what some Massachusetts community decided to do, which was they allow product manufacturing. They allow cultivation, they don't allow retail. You might decide to do that. We'll get into all of the aspects of this, but. Basically, what a cultivation and product manufacturing business is, it's just like any other. Industrial or manufacturing businesses that most cities and towns are dying to attract into their jurisdiction, okay? They increase the tax base, they provide quite a few jobs. What it involves in most instances is it's an indoor greenhouse, highly controlled lighting, HVAC. And you grow the plants, and once those plants are grown. Some of the parts of the plants are packaged into flower, smokable flower, that's sort of traditionally out-mannerized and used by consumers. In the country, but there's other portions of the plant where you extract those oils and you infuse them into products, edibles and such. And that is actually the fastest-growing segment of the industry right now. Most people are moving away from smokable flower. The most helpful way to pick the product, and they prefer these other methods of using the products. And so. The facilities themselves are closed to the public, okay? These cultivation and manufacturing facilities, it's limited access, only the employees are getting in there. As a result, you don't see traffic problems at cultivation facilities. You know, employees come in nine o'clock, generally leaving by five o'clock. But it's just not a heavy-duty traffic impact from a cultivation or product manufacturing facility. The security is significant, you've seen a little bit of that, the first presentation talked to you a little bit, again, I'll just mention. Access is limited to employees, sometimes a vendor can get in, but there's strict protocols on what that vendor has to do to be allowed into the facility. And then even within the facility, access is limited, you don't, the person who is sweeping the facility doesn't have access to the vault. Where product is held, it's sometimes done by barcode, sometimes key cards, sometimes even. Bone print, but there's a lot of ways that you limit the access of your employees, so that you only have employees where they need to be. Within that facility. There are cameras throughout this facility. Security will have a view all around the facility, three hundred and sixty-degree view, you can see everybody that's coming and going. In the interior, every room where marijuana is handled or stored has a camera. So it's very well-covered and that footage from those cameras is kept. It's usually for ninety days, I can't remember what the Connecticut regulation is on that, but they're kept for quite some time, I'll sort of explain why in a minute. Also, panic and duress alarms kept throughout the facility. All of this product is tracked by what's called a seed-to-sale tracking system. All of this product is tracked by what's called a seed-to-sale tracking system. Okay, so you're concerned here when you run one of these is, is this product going to somehow get out the back door? Okay, doesn't happen. I'll tell you why. From the moment that seed grows up out of the ground, you slap a barcode on that, okay? And its inventory, it gets weighed, okay? Every single plant in the facility is weighed like that and put into your inventory list. And then periodically you weigh again as the plant is growing. And so if a plant that weighed two ounces this week, next week only weighs one ounce, that inventory system tells you that something is wrong. So then you go back to the video footage and you find out what happened. And if a, uh, one of these companies finds that employee has somehow tried to divert that product out of the normal distribution scheme, tried to put it in their pocket, whatever, that, that employee is going to be terminated immediately. These companies have a no tolerance policy on these types of diversion uh, efforts. It's important. They spend millions of dollars to get these licenses and build these facilities. They're not going to allow that license to get taken away by allowing employees to do that sort of thing. So it's been very strict. And quite frankly, in Massachusetts, we haven't seen a lot of problems in that regard. Um, again, uh, you know, from a security, safety standpoint, uh, in, in Massachusetts, almost no problems whatsoever. Colorado, I think, has had the same experience. Washington, same experience. That is not by and large uh, been an issue here. On the economic side of this cultivation and manufacturing, let's take a small cultivation and processing facility. Maybe ten thousand square feet of growing space or less. That's going to employ anywhere from twenty to thirty individuals. Uh, and these businesses are going to utilize materials, services from nearby vendors, like any other business. So there's that economic benefit as well. Um, so it goes beyond just jobs. Um, and I would also note that there's one license type. It's a micro-business cultivation license that's available in Connecticut. And with respect to that, if you, if you allow one of those here, uh, you get three percent of the revenue of those sales as well. So uh, there is a, a significant uh, revenue um, potential here. Uh, you know, just using those numbers, a facility of the ten thousand square foot size could generate anywhere from uh, in, in the range of a hundred thousand dollars a year. It's not insignificant. Uh, now let me switch over to the more controversial uh, side, which is the retail, which we've talked about. Uh, obviously, I represent the industry. I can be accused of having a bias in that regard. Uh, but what I would do is I would invite, invite you to Massachusetts. Um, because I will tell you that if you go to just about every city and town in Massachusetts where this has gone on, retail, they're going to tell you, go to the chief of police. And almost all of them stood up at the beginning, said, this is terrible, we're worried about what this is going to do. And they'll all tell you right now, I completely overdid it on my worry. It hasn't been resolved. That's what it is. Um, I heard, um, there's a, there's a lot of people that put out things on the internet, internet and this and that and rumors about crime. I'm sorry. Please don't buy everything that's on the internet. I'm not asking you to believe me either. What I am telling you is go to some of the cities and towns that have done this, okay? They're going to tell you, there has not been an increase in crime in any of these places. I will also tell you that there are studies out in uh, Colorado and Washington uh, that tell, that show you that in a lot of areas, especially high crime areas, crime goes down around these facilities because there's incredibly heightened security aspect of these facilities. Those cameras uh, are on twenty-four seven. Um, up in Massachusetts, there was a great case where uh, the town of Brookline, Massachusetts had a string of burglaries near one of the facilities. Uh, the facility handed over their uh, camera footage to the police that caught a burglar. Hey, this is not an attractive place for people with bad intent. They don't allow onsite consumption of the product. Um, that's a big no-no for the industry. The last thing you want is your customers seeing people driving into the parking lot, seeing people using the product. Not allowed. Every one of these businesses, if you allow them in retails, they will shoot people right out of the parking lot the minute they're done with the transaction. This is not a place for voyeur. It's a, a regulated, highly regulated area, uh, and we try to keep it safe for our customers. Um. So let me, again, just go over on the security side here. Uh, you've been through, you've heard a little bit about this before, but you've got the same access controls. You can't just walk into one of these uh, places. They have what's called a Sally Port, as was mentioned before. You, you show your ID, walk into the vestibule. You cannot get further into that facility without them checking that ID. Once you get, do, they do check it, you're twenty-one, you get buzzed into a sales floor, you're going to have to show that ID again in order to buy that product. All right, they take it very serious. Uh, again, most people sort of compare these, these facilities to pharmacies or liquor stores. You walk right into a pharmacy or liquor store. You can't do that here. Hey, you show up to one of these places um, with your children, they're not going to let your children in just because you're with them. Must be twenty-one years old to get into this facility. Um, also, I would mention that retailers do have onsite uh, on-on security uh, during business hours and is twenty-four seven monitoring uh, of the premises after business hours and into twenty-four seven. Uh, are there other impacts? Well, let's look at traffic. Uh, when Massachusetts first legalized, it was a nightmare, okay? There were two uh, dispensaries for the entire state of Massachusetts, for that matter, east of the Mississippi River. Everybody came to these places. Uh, if there were new stories constantly of the number of people that showed up. Now in Massachusetts, we have, I think it's two hundred and fifty retail. Um, so you don't see any of those problems anymore. And by the way, to the, to the discussion we were having earlier about saturation, if, if, as uh, as the council said earlier, if you have seventy-five of these, you're not going to be saturated. Um, it's, it's just what the numbers are. On average, and some people, I don't necessarily believe this, but on average, one percent of your population has used marijuana in the last thirty days. That's your market. It's not insignificant. Okay, what, what we generally have in Massachusetts uh, is a rule that allows places to have twenty percent of the number of liquor stores that they have in a community. That's the lower limit that they're allowed to limit it to. And so twenty percent of the number of liquor stores is what you're seeing for market. And with seventy-five, I don't think you're even close to that in Connecticut. So I don't really see a likelihood of saturation. And I don't see a likelihood of a great deal of traffic around these places, but there are things that you can do uh, along those lines. Generally, your first month of operation when you open, they'll open it with police details. Sometimes you do it appointment only to make sure that the crowds don't come. Uh, it's those first couple of weeks that can be a problem, but once you get past that, you're just not going to see that at that point. Um, leaving aside security, traffic, and, and I'll get back to the economics. Uh, these businesses will employ generally ten to fifteen people at retail. Also, the three percent sales tax that was mentioned before. Um, I can't tell you what that will generate. There was a, a mention of three hundred thousand dollars uh, annually, not out of the question. Uh, a, a, a good selling store will, could easily sell ten million, ten million dollars. Uh, so that's, that is possible. Uh, are those taxes alone enough reason to allow retail here? Obviously, that's your call. Um, but I have heard, and it's expressed earlier, uh, that, that it's not worth it, that three hundred thousand dollars doesn't even come close to covering what the impacts are going to be here. I want to push back a little. Okay, uh, Massachusetts had a law uh, that basically uh, allowed towns, in addition to charging three percent for tax, they can also charge another three percent, what they call an impact fee. And every city and town that, that opened up to marijuana did. Um, and what they found, and, and they were supposed to sort of limit it, and they were supposed to prove to everybody that this three percent was actually related to the impacts and the costs um, on, on the community. They were supposed to annually provide reports to uh, the Cannabis Control Commission in Massachusetts. And what they found after five years of operation is they couldn't. The impacts did not exist. Some towns tried, but basically they couldn't do it, and the state did away with these three percent impact fees. So again, you don't have to take my word for it. I would suggest that you speak to the local police chiefs up in these, in Massachusetts, because they're uniformly going to tell you, uh, this has not been that big a problem. The, the other issue I would say to you, and you know, in terms of saying, well, we don't need it here. Why do we need it here? Uh, as, as the council said before, it is here, but beyond that, your residents are going to go to the next town that has it. They're going to bring it back here. It's the only thing that you're prohibiting, if you prohibit legal retail sales, is the tax revenue that you get from it. That's it. It's still going to be here. So I also want to leave you with one other thought, as I mentioned earlier, um. I, I generally try to stay uh, out of these studies and statistics, because there's so much misinformation on the internet. I will mention a couple. Um, because Washington and Massachusetts and Colorado have all uh, done studies on teen use. Okay, and what they have found is it does not go up in these legalized states, or it hasn't. I'm not here to tell you that it's definitive yet. Okay, I'm not. I don't know. This is still a very young industry. Legalization is very young in all of these places. But the news is generally good so far. Okay, there isn't evidence that teen use is going up. Okay, they are not buying from these retail facilities. They don't get into these retail facilities. So again, I'll, I'll just leave you the, the conclusion. I, I think, you know, for most towns, cultivation, product manufacturing, it's a no-brainer, just like the rest of your uh, industrial activities in the town. Retail, I will tell you that I think it can be done. I think it could be done responsibly. If you do some smart zoning, put it in the right areas. Believe it or not, that's generally not tucked away somewhere. A lot of police chiefs like to have it in the middle of things so they can keep an eye on it. Uh, but if you do that, you can probably do that as well. Um, and happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Well, appreciate the presentation, um, and uh, questions or, yeah?
Yes, just wondering, um. Make a backup in a minute, but the question is, is it taxed as manufacturing or as a cultural? We saw this in another one, and just curious to know if that makes a huge difference on what the town gets for the actual building and operation.
Can get to that answer. Don't have it off the top of my head. I'm sorry. It's, it's a three percent taxes. It's the most I know about it, but I'll, I'll find out. Yeah, yeah.
Um. This is. Um, on the retail side, yeah, are there limitations to what a single person can purchase, uh, I assume? No, medical marijuana.
And I, and I think it's an ounce here too. Um, but uh, you know, it, it's th- those, there, there are limitations. It's, it's sort of on the company itself to keep track of that.
And what, who sets that? State?
That's a state.
Okay, and can individual towns set limits?
I don't think you can uh, go against what the state allows. That's just sort of a general legal rule. Um, in general, you can do your own sort of local zoning, but I'm not sure something that directly confronts state law would be allowed. Hey, any questions? A moment? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Chris?
For such economic development, I'm the director of town of Berlin. Um, a couple of things, um, my commission has not had a chance to debate this, but um, I did just want to mention a couple of thoughts that I had initially. Um, the town of Berlin has been both making things and growing things for a hundred and fifty years. Let's put some bulk under roots, as I understand it, for certain is, it's one of the most secure facilities we would have in town. Um, I would just, my cultivation side, I would just ask that you consider it. Um, I think if it's in the right place and the right things are in place, it can make sense. Again, we will talk about it from economic development to get their support, or just my initial thoughts are keep an open mind. That's actually what I would say is keep an open mind. Because again, if it's something where it's not going to affect police or otherwise, and again, assuming that, that the taxes are like manufacturing, and you've seen from the, the four ninety side, there's just the taxes for agriculture, the town gets a small amount for manufacturing. So just my two cents, I will come back with more recommendations from them, but I think it's just it, it can be done properly and if it's something of interest in the right place and um worth looking at. That's just kind of my two cents from talking with some other folks. What I do. Thank you. Chris?
Thank you.
I have a couple, a couple of comments. When it comes to cultivation, I know when the lettuce factory came out in front of the PZC, there was quite a list of stipulations for them, and one of them was that they were not to grow cannabis. I'm just envisioning pushback from this company if they indeed are seeing that we're letting another company come in here that can grow cannabis, if that was ever in the back of their mind that they wanted to grow. That's just a, the other question, or not question, but concern that I have with, like, when lawyer was talking about teenagers, understandable that the teenager won't go into the store to buy the marijuana. That's not saying that they're not going to buy it from somebody who went to the store that bought the marijuana.
Thank you. Yeah.
Do I have a counsel?
It feels good to be back, but I, I was here mostly to listen, but I did just have um, one, I guess, just something to think of as, you know, the town makes this decision. So um, we heard from Amanda earlier that there were restrictions on placing um retail facilities near residential neighborhoods, places of worship, et cetera. Um, I am very familiar with that particular facility, so I guess one thing to keep in mind is are those same restrictions in place for cultivation facilities? I don't know the answer to that, but you know, Phil, if, if, if you know the answer, we'd love to hear it, but that's just something that popped in my mind because that particular facility is pretty close to a residential neighborhood and I'd love to hear your thoughts on it. Thanks.
So uh, as a general proposition, you can create buffer zones. I, I think what the, what the council before was showing were sort of what has historically been the buffer zones used by some cities and towns in other states. I, I don't think, I think you may have a buffer with schools, but I'm not sure that uh, there's a buffer for some of these other uses. So you can create uh, what buffers you want, whether it's residences, you don't have to do it for residences, but churches, data carriers, that sort of thing is fairly common. So um, you know, I would say to you, put some thought into that because there were some towns that in fact tried to do that, effectively left no place whatsoever for any of these cannabis, cannabis businesses to go. So you want to, you want to be careful about that a little, leave some room for these places to operate, but obviously.
Thanks.
What is the address again of the facility?
The, the address of my client's facility is twenty-five hundred Turnpike.
Thank you. Um, yes.
Yes, folks online, uh, comments, questions? You know, if, if not, okay too. Oh, yes, yeah.
Good day, guys. How we doing?
Good.
You? Uh, I'm Tim Ziegman. Glenn. And I suggested a presentation here of BT one to Central District uh, as compared to sites of retail. All those, those districts back to residential. Uh, all Turnpike particularly is not real, definitely a lot uh, area. So they back up to residential and the depth of lots are not great. Uh, the other thing is in BT one, BT one, BT two is now bringing in a bunch of mixed-use developments. Uh, and now got to six, six hundred units, somewhere around there. Uh, so those, those will be a lot of residential in there. Our central unit, our, our central district was brought up also is mixed-use development now. And I don't know what the, still bullfires, well, how many units will be on that, that, the hundred and something?
Seventy-two then, seventy-two are they?
Uh, but that is all, uh, re, all residential. The manufacturing, I've been reading articles on this in the last couple of weeks. Uh, and I guess legislators are bringing in something this about edibles. Uh, and I guess legislatures are bringing in something this about edibles. Uh, gummy bears and stuff like that, uh, because that's potential problem real quick. Uh, and that's go be addressed. And the other items of manufacturing is article in the paper. Last couple of weeks about people working in manufacturing facilities now getting sick. Uh, basically, they're rolling that joints, whatever you're doing, uh, and the dust and stuff is getting them sick. So now there's a environmental. Item happening there that being addressed to. So all those items, I think, that would be addressed when we look at these items.
Um, anyone else, comments, questions? Chief, I don't wanna leave you out if you have everything you wanna say, if you don't, it's okay. Um, yeah, no, so.
So, I I was just gonna say, I I mean, I I think everybody here understands, obviously, that um any action that's taken by planning and zoning. It would be in the form of a testament, so uh there's a whole process. Um, to go through, and I know that to give them, you know, mention, okay. That, you know, sometimes that carries over to other women and so forth. So, um, but it is important, you know, to mention that for, you know, folks who may watch our meeting recording. Um, on YouTube channel, on who are interested in this topic, so, you know, this is, we're still in information gathering. Um, part of 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 the evaluation of this, and so, you know, there there, if, if. The commission is inclined to allow particular cannabis establishment uses, and there are a number of them, I can retract on. Under the patent use under Puma, there will be two, um, but, um, you know, we've talked about. Some of, some of the uses, the manufacturing, the cultivation, and the retail uses, um. That's come into play under Iraq, so uh they would direct, the commission would direct staff. And council to draft a proposed regulation, um, and that would be scheduled for public hearing. Um, and obviously, the public would have the opportunity to review, comment on that text. So, um, and and it's, um, it can say, again, a couple of us done. So, you know, if you do have concerns about language, um, and you know, you're a state establishment. Such a business in town, you have the opportunity to comment on the specific language.
Thank you, Jennifer, so, um, I thought this was great, great information, we all gathered here, planning zoning and. And council and everyone else, um, thank you folks for for coming and and giving us that information, we appreciate that. Um, so I think next, we would look to maybe uh get a few more folks from the public uh out here and, uh, you know. Perhaps hold it maybe a little bit bigger um facility, maybe at the high school or or the beginning. High middle school, um, and get some, we need some input from the community, right? We're here, I know we're elected officials, we're appointed officials, we represent our, obviously, folks in town, but. Need, we need to hear from them and see, see what their thoughts are, and likewise, give them kind of the same information that we heard tonight, so. So we'll, we'll look to do that uh as quick as possible, um, we are entering budget season. But we'll, we'll, we'll try and do it as early as possible, possibly. February tomorrow, so uh maybe late March or something, get through the. Budget season and then try and put a a public meeting together, just so we can get that out to the community. And get the information to to our, to our residents, our taxpayers, obviously, so they can hopefully give us some guidance, right? We uh, we do the best we can on our own, but we'd like to hear from our residents at all possible. If there's nothing else from any, anybody, commission, council, we're good? No, we're good, we appreciate it again, thank you all for coming here, and uh go ahead and uh adjourn the meeting, thank you.